One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Karen, could you please call a roll?
Mr. Dupree?
Here.
Ms. Hendrickson?
Here.
Ms. Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Fellows?
Here.
Mr. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Bealey?
Here.
And Ms. Ogles.
Thank you.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Yes, please. I have two clarifications, one on page four. The middle paragraph where it says Ms. Saunders, instead of ending the paragraph with the pre-construction meeting, I just wanted to say to ensure winter construction has appropriate erosion sedimentation measures included. And then on page seven, I'd also like to add a footnote that says has stormwater management features, just to clarify some of the things that I said, and I'll hand it to Karen.
I amend the motion to include Ms. Saunders' comments.
Second that. Any further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Before we move on, one quick housekeeping item. Item number eight, Toughen Up LLC, has been tabled to allow a little more time to address some open items there. The next item, number four, Rosewood Land Development, Inc., requests sketch plan review for Tucker Brook subdivision, Payne Road, at R 49, Lot 2.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you just noted, this is a sketch plan, and so a sketch plan is an opportunity for an applicant to provide an overview of the project for the board, to begin a discussion around sort of the concept of what they're looking to do, introduce any of the areas that they want, like some further guidance, and for the board to provide any thoughts they have for the applicant moving forward. As noted, this is a sketch plan for a subdivision. The subdivision is in the R 2 district. The R 2 district requires that if a site meets certain characteristics, one of which is an acre or more of wetlands, that it needs to go through a conservation subdivision review process. This is a little bit unique from what the board might typically expect to see in a conservation subdivision, in that one of the characteristics in the R 2 that we want to really start a discussion with the board about is that sewer sanitary connection is required unless the board finds that it's unreasonable or infeasible based on whatever characteristics. And if the board does find that, then the subdivision really defaults back to a typical R 2 lot size, which is 20,000 square feet with 100 feet of frontage. But 40% of the land area needs to be maintained as open space rather than the typical 50%. So that's a little bit what you'll be hearing about as we move forward. As staff reviewed this, you've received comments from us, we just want to draw to the board's attention a couple of things. This property backs up to an existing neighborhood called the, oh my gosh, it's Heritage Acres, thank you. Heritage Acres neighborhood, where there's known to be a number of issues with existing septic systems. And so just as we move forward, should the board find that sort of connecting to sanitary, to the sewer system is truly infeasible, we'll really want to be sure we fully explore sort of the subsurface wastewater disposal that the applicant will be going through through this process. And let's see, a couple other items we want to just touch on is there's a stream that runs through the backside of a few of the lots, I think it's lots one through seven, and just really understanding sort of the setbacks to that stream and impacts there. And as always, when we look at these subdivisions in the conservation subdivision design, the purpose is to avoid any disturbance of wetlands unless the board finds that there's really no other feasible or practical alternative. And so just being sure we're thinking about those issues. So I think that will be it at this point for my overview, and I'll turn it back to you.
Thanks, Jay, and I'll turn it over to the applicant representative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Sean Frank. I'm an engineer with Sibego Technics. With me tonight is Joe Fustaci of our Rosewood Land Development. As usual, Jay's done a nice introduction, and if I may, I would just walk over to the board and give a quick introduction to the project. So, I believe this is on a red light, so I hope it's working. Just to get everyone oriented, Payne Road in this location here, regal, is the access right over here, the right now is a semi-familiar house block along here, Albert McPherson's Payne Road right here. This definitely is a, you know, it's a small tributary, and that actually loses its channel, if you will, once it gets down to this larger wetland, and then tight back into Tucker Brook, which is basically our Wesley property line here. We have upland areas, upland areas, upland areas, obviously, it's a pretty good wetland area, so it's a good project as well. Together, we have approximately 21, just under 21 acres. I'm just doing a quick now, incidentally, whatever, calculations based on the R 2, I don't think it's the 24 lots, we're looking at a total of 14 lots here. What we didn't want to do was to get into any types of other accesses, if you will, along Payne Road, except for the one in Forest Access. In terms of existing sewer, the nearest existing municipal sanitary sewer is Bonnie Grove Drive, which is about 3,300 feet up Payne Road from us. The only way obviously we'd be able to access that is by a pump station and a plow machine to get it up there, which is up and down, and up and down, obviously, because of Payne Road. We know the layout of Payne Road as well, it's just really from an economic standpoint, it just wouldn't make any sense for us, but first of all, the lots. So what we could do is spend a lot of time on the site in terms of soils and wetlands and natural resources associated with it. This layout does have some wetland impacts, but what we have is basically a small pocket of wetlands, if you will, in this area here that actually has the drainage way up and down, that's still been eroded over time, and that's something with the maximum amount of our wetland. What we tried to do was maintain a large contiguous open space down in this area here, especially along Tucker Brook, as you can see, you've got a great distance associated with that from Tucker Brook, which has a variety of areas besides the upland, the puddles of wetlands associated with it. What we keep talking about is, you know, a 900-foot access road coming in, built to town standards, colonnade within a hammerhead under this design, that means it would be curved on both sides, a sidewalk on one side. This area will be retained for stormwater management, our anticipation is probably another day upon, and perhaps some picks up on this, we're talking about this for some of the lower lots. Just looking at some of the review comments that we have seen, we are showing right now a 75-foot stream setback. The DEP requires that in terms of the 75-foot stream setback to the building envelope, the actual structure itself, unless you do a full NRP, one of the comments was how would we define that? What we'd like to define is something probably in between there, maybe like a 50-foot, where we have a 75-foot structure, maybe 50-foot undisturbed along the stream, if the board would be comfortable with something along those lines, and then we'd actually put a physical buffer there also. We came no cut within that 50-foot area, actually, a couple of split rail fans or something along those lines, that's actually, if you would, within it, that there's no disturbance part of the access. Again, just something we'd like to discuss with the board. Another question was regarding access to Lot 8. This is a beautiful spot up here, we would like to obviously try to get up to that. Our thought were really to come up along, off the hammerhead here, up along the back, try to minimize any wetland impacts to that, to allow us to get up to that hole up there, which again, is a nice spot. If we do, we're minimal wetland in that. We had, there was some discussions about maybe working with the lots themselves, again, the soils were something part of the conversation in terms of finding acceptable soils, that means town of Scarborough requirements, the state of Maine requires nine inches of passing soils, the town of Scarborough actually requires 15. So, you know, we did have to work with that in terms of making sure we had acceptable passing soils for all the lots. Going on Jay's, in terms of the septic systems within the existing neighborhoods, we can appreciate, I think those are probably a lot of those, I had to guess, I think it's like a 70s development, so you know, it's probably somewhere at 40 years old, some people have built today's standards. Certainly, I am comfortable that in terms of having the 15 inches of existing soil, in terms of having the 2-1 separation from the bottom of the beds and the emitting factor, and everything in association with the way things are constructed today, the inspection would be the goal with that, we're certainly comfortable that we get 14 systems in there that function fine. Are we good at anticipating them in an IJ analysis for what has happened to our subdivision application associated with that? What else do I have here? Again, I will go ahead and ask.
In terms of the open space, there was a question regarding the final disposition of that. The applicant is certainly more willing, is more than willing to discuss with the town, with the land trust, anybody that might be interested in that, and if not, obviously, then we'll just maintain it as part of the homeowners association that run along with that. Certainly, we will work with the police and fire department in terms of those things. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we understand this is just a sketch plan, appreciate the fact that, you know, our time has been spent a lot, obviously, in terms of the natural resources on the site, the passing soils on the site, certainly, we wanted to present it to the board before we took the next step and started doing a lot of heavy design associated with this, just to try to get your feedback and any concerns you folks might have before we started that process. So with that, I conclude my presentation, and certainly be happy to answer any questions that the board has. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger, would you like to start on there?
Sure. Initially, I was wondering about the, you know, the debate between sewers and septic system, but seeing that Heritage Acres, I assume Heritage Acres does not have sewers, they just have septic systems there. And I know they've had a lot of problems over the years. So it doesn't seem to me to make a lot of sense to try and demand or mandate that this project have sewers if Heritage Acres, which is upland from where this place is, does not have it. I don't know what the backstory, what that is. Anything you can light this on?
Maybe you could also, Jay or Angela, give a little bit of context in terms of, you know, if there is at least kind of a rough rule of thumb for a town generally considers to be reasonable proximity.
There was a discussion with the director of the sanitary district at our interdepartment review meeting, and, you know, his feeling was that, and Jamel told me if I go astray here, but during that discussion, he felt that it was, that that was a long distance, and that the district itself wasn't certainly inclined to sort of move forward with that, and that it was, you know, that it was outside of what they would typically expect someone to do. But, you know, that's, so that's what we heard from the district. And I guess, so, I'm sorry, Roger, I guess I wasn't fully following, so, right, Heritage Acres does not have public sewer, everyone's on septic systems there, and I guess I don't ...
Well, I guess my point is, I, the neighborhood I live in, when sewers went in, in the mid-'80s, I mean, people couldn't wait to hook up to it because it was constantly, there was constantly water problems there. And so I would assume Heritage Acres, the people there would feel the same way. I was just kind of curious why they haven't hooked up to sewers, you know, especially where they've had this history of having, you know, problems in that neighborhood. And if they, there's got to be a really compelling reason, it's probably financial, or maybe it's, you know, geology.
Yeah, I think, you know, one of the things that our, the local sanitary district is typically not in the business of expanding their lines, they sort of look at development to do that, and then to tie into the existing capacity, so I don't know that there has been, at least in my 10 years here, really much discussion on sort of the public side in terms of sewer expansions, sort of without there being new development coming along and sort of being the, doing the heavy lift on that.
Okay. So, I don't know how the rest of the board would feel, but it doesn't seem to make, from my point of view regarding that debate, I can see where the, you know, the septic systems makes more economic sense to go that route. The other question I would have is on Lot 8, is your, is your idea that you're going to be having a driveway going from the end of the hammerhead?
Not right at the end, on the side.
Yeah, on the side?
On the side of the hammerhead, and up almost along the property line, and then swing back into the lot.
Okay. Is there any, do we have any problem with that arrangement?
So we do have a design and a detail for where driveways can go. Basically, there's a, it can't be, I think, within 25 feet of the end of the hammerhead, or 25 feet from where radius is off the main trunk line. So there is a window in which ...
Yeah, I think we'd have just enough window to make.
So that's a detail that would be flushed out.
Is there a window? It looks like it's right at the end of the hammerhead, is where it would be.
We'd have to impact, I'm sorry, we'd have to impact wetland, it looks like, in some respect, for Lot 8.
Okay, so that's, that's a question down the road, I guess, or?
I would think they would need to demonstrate how they thread that needle, and whether there'll be any wetland impact.
Okay. I guess at this point, I don't have anything further.
Thanks. Nick?
I'm gonna just go back to that sewer for a second. Do, where are the lines kind of stopping in relation on the larger picture here? Stand back a little bit. Do we know roughly where those sewer lines are? And this is more to satisfy my own curiosity.
Yep, so I think as the, as Mr. Frank mentioned, they're up near Bonnie Grove, which is up Payne Road, and I'm trying to zoom in here on the sort of ...
It's pretty close to Cabela's.
Yeah, Bonnie Grove is the closest I found.
Yep, and so Bonnie Grove, let's see, where are we here? There's Payne, I think this is Higgin's Parkway, labeled as home route. So probably, if you look up at the screen, my mouse is sort of going, probably in that area.
Over here, maybe?
Along Payne Road.
We have a lot of businesses right around.
So, yeah, so Bonnie Grove is just beyond Cabela's on Payne Road, is that first subdivision on the right. Exactly, yep, it's probably a 10-lot or so subdivision.
This is over a quarter mile away.
Yeah, and I just did a quick, as I remember right, I think I just did a quick on the aerial, and it just came up right around 3,000 feet, as I recollect.
Okay. And then, also on the larger view of things, and I'm glad you mentioned the sanitary district portion of this, which is they don't really have a whole lot of intent to continue to expand their lines. I just don't want to sell ourselves short here in the sense of, you know, if there was a connection from Route 1 down to Payne Road, it seems to me like that would be a natural progression of development in this area. You know, kind of is a busier area, we know there's some land out there. But I also know the hardship that I don't necessarily think should be the developer's burden either, so, in its entirety. So a little torn on that one. But if, if you can make it work with the soils and not experience the issues that the neighboring has, that would, I guess, satisfy me. And I don't know if I missed your comment on this, I know, I know staff in their comments had mentioned putting Lot 8 perhaps next to Lot 7. Was there any reason that you were not in favor of it, other than that you think the current Lot 8 is a nice spot for a house?
Number one, that is a nice spot for a house, but it may be anything, in terms of whatever's going to prove the storm, and I guess we're assuming that this was my natural spot, if you will, storm, and I can't remember soils, I can't remember if the soils were acceptable there from a septic system standpoint as well. I do know that the further we were going down the hill, the further so, from a passing standpoint, we'd be going back up the hill, if you will, to Lot 8. So number one, I was just looking at utilizing that area for stormwater management, and number two, my anticipation is that we can access it.
Okay. And it looks like Lot 11, you tried a couple times to find some good soils, does that sound right?
Yes, Lot 11, I saw that. And I apologize, those weren't all passing test pits, those were just a number of test pits that were there, but you're right, they were, the ones in the middle, actually, are the ones that weren't passing. So, you know, there were certainly some, you know, areas that, in terms of the soils, again, would probably pass the state, but didn't quite pass the town.
Okay. I think I'm all set for it right now.
Thanks, Nick.
If I could just make a clarifying point, and this is actually an issue that came up on a recent subdivision as well, and just want to be sure that the applicant's thinking about as they move forward with their stormwater approach, that area utilized for stormwater facilities doesn't get counted towards the open space provision?
Oh, you've mentioned that, yep.
So I just want to be sure that that gets mentioned and is included in your calculations as you move forward. So, that was it. Thanks.
Thank you, Jay, you had sent that to me, so I appreciate you saying that again.
Thanks for your time. Robin?
Yeah, and along that same line, Jay, I was wondering if you could talk about sort of the intent for a conservation easement? Is it to have contiguous open space that's meant for enjoyment? Is it to, could you just talk a little bit about the intent of the conservation?
Sure, of the conservation subdivision design?
Yeah.
So the first intent is wetlands avoidance and to not impact wetlands. Then, the ordinance does spell out, it's, I think there's three or four ways that you can utilize the open space. The first one they sort of talk about is just sort of natural areas, and it does, it looks to try to create contiguous open spaces, you know, for woodland creatures and for, for all the other values that that creates. Open spaces can be used for agricultural land, if, you know, if the soils were such that this was a good farmland, which it doesn't sound like it is, that could be utility. It does allow for sort of, I'll call it more active recreation space, it doesn't necessarily just have to be trails through wood, but again, these are sort of things that the board can approve. So that's another stated intent, or allowance, I should say, of the, for the open space.
Excellent. Okay, and so with that, I guess I'll turn it back over, and what's the intent to maintain the open space?
Yeah, the open space, really, in terms of the plans, which is passive, what, you know, basically walks of the woods more than anything else, certainly nothing in terms of any disturbance associated with it. As Jay stated, I guess my experience with the conservation subdivision design has been, and actually, in accordance with the conversation with Jay, you notice that the property line actually follows up to the streams, along that open space as well. We adjusted this lot line as well, so we're gonna hold the wetland, so we're gonna maintain as much of the wetland areas and natural resources within that open space. And again, from our standpoint, there's a recreation fee, you know, pay the recreation fee associated with the lots, that they develop, you know, the townwide fields, if you will.
Sean, can you tell me what's going on behind the, I understand that there's a residential parcel that's in white?
Yes.
A residential parcel, move west of that, and it's sloped there. Nope, up, up, yep, right in that area. How come, and is that part of the conserva, the open space?
Yes, it is. It's a pretty good size of upland, right, if you get associated with the open space.
Okay. I'm just wondering how come no test pits or anything were done there? Is it because you didn't want to traverse the stream?
Exactly, there was a number of, again, as we were, we were coming down through, it seemed they were getting a little bit worse, what we didn't really want to do is, this was a kind of a difficult access, we didn't want to, I think, there'd be access off Payne Road.
All right. Can you talk to me about the flows on site, too? Because I know you're talking about Tucker Brook, and which way the wetlands flow toward Tucker Brook, and if Tucker Brook is tributary to either Willowdale or Scarborough, or another river in town?
Which one is that? That's a good question.
It goes into Beaver Brook, I believe.
Beaver Brook?
I believe it's down to, down to Beaver Brook, down by Flaherty's Farm there, and then into, then into the marsh north of Route 1.
The main, where it passes right there where the Flaherty Farm is, that's the one that Tucker Brook goes right into. Obviously, the general flow right now is kind of down along this way, a lot of it will be headed towards this trib area, and then down into the wetlands. Obviously, the road would be intercepting all the uphill stuff associated with that, we'd probably go to the front of the lots, if you will, back to the road, and then try to let the back of the lots.
And then just to, if you would, if you wouldn't mind, Sean, talk to me about the existing hydrology north of the site where Heritage Acres are, I think that's what it's called, Heritage Development?
Yes, and again, that's, I would say that's, this whole flow, if you will, I'd say is the same direction that was passed.
Perfect, okay. So with all of that on the table, I guess where I'm going with this is, it seems to me like there's actually a tremendous opportunity to potentially partner between the two homeowner associations of this proposed Tucker Brook condominium, condo, or whatever homeowner association it will be, and Heritage, which was in the 1970s. It seems like there's a growing demand out in that area for sanitary, and I understand that development usually picks up that tab, but if, if we have failing septics in Heritage right next door and upstream, it seems to me like there's more and more demand for that. So how about Portland Water District? I mean, are, are they gonna have drinking water supplied out there?
There is, there's municipal water within Payne Road.
Right, so if we got water, if we got municipal water going down there, I'm not sure why we can't have sewer going down there. I understand the cost, I understand there's a cost, but there's also a cost to failing septics that are so close to the Scarborough Marsh.
And again, I appreciate that, but again, that's an existing situation, that, again, we're talking 14 lots here, so I mean, it is going to be awful hard for us, and I will say that one of our first questions was to the sanitary district, was are there any plans for, you know, potentially, anywhere in the works at all, but potentially having sanitary sewer service down Payne Road? And no, there was absolutely none, and I mean, it's obviously going to be difficult for, for my client in terms of this particular development, to try to be the ...
Absolutely, and so I put it sort of maybe the question back to staff, too, is talking about, is there, is there a growing demand in that area of Payne Road or in Route 1 for that? But the other thing I want to just talk about, too, a little bit, is you're proposing to have, to not necessarily encroach, but not necessarily fully honor the full 75-foot setback, it sounds like, on some of these lots.
So, again, the 75-foot setback, and I understand that when you have a stream protection in Scarborough, that there's certain stream bodies that they have the stream protection on. Obviously, the small tributary is not one where it's actually defined as stream protection under the town of Scarborough ordinance. 75 feet, I always show, again, it's to the building envelope, if you will, associated with that, because DEP, from a permit by rule standpoint, you'd require a full NRP to have a building within that 75-foot setback. However, with a permit by rule, we can disturb within 25 feet of the stream, actually.
Yes, you can, but whether or not it's necessarily the best thing for the site, it remains to be seen.
I appreciate it, and that's why I, if we could kind of, you know, and again, oftentimes maybe people could have a little back yawn back here, and, you know, because there's no relaxation, unfortunately, we have to meet, it's almost on the conservation subdivision design under these standards, that, you know, typically, if I do that in the R 2 zone, you get some relief in terms of the setbacks. The setbacks are the same, so I have a 40-foot front yard.
No, and I appreciate you, I think, I think you're really, you're pushing it to the limit here to see, you know, how far it is that we can go, but I think we've got to throttle it back just a little bit. I think there's a little bit of, you know, I think compromise that, that needs to be made here. I have a couple other questions. One, what's the year of the wetland review?
The initial one was 2011, and that's, that's on the plan, which off my expect, we have, we have been back out there again, and we did the Paverma pools, yes.
In 2017? Okay, good, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't 2016 with the drought conditions, because it's going to be misleading if it was 2016.
Good question. I think it was actually the summer, wasn't it? Yes, okay.
Okay, good. And then last but not least, where are you envisioning this underdrained soil filter to go?
Where?
Yeah.
To the actual physical, the oak wall, so.
Yeah, anywhere, because we're pushing it to the limit here, Sean, so I'm just wondering where you're going to see it.
Well, there's an oak layer right at the tree there.
So terraced, perhaps, on that slope?
Oh, perhaps, and again, or maybe excavated into the slope, you know, and then just use the slope itself, or the oak wall, or maybe, you know, bringing that down into here, we got a flat spot in through here, I mean, something having to do with the design associated with that.
Yeah.
But I don't see there's a huge farm associated with it, you know, there's a pretty good clear area, if this is a 20,000 square per lot, that's certainly a 25,000 square, whatever you have.
Again, it's a challenging site, with a lot of wetlands, and I'm, and I'm just wondering if an underdrained drain soil filter with the soil types out there is the best, is the best proposed treatment.
And I'm wide open to suggestions associated with that, but, you know, when it really comes down to the end of the, and again, in this case, we are going to have curbs, curbs with catch basins, so I mean, there is certain end of the line associated when you get into that type of design.
So would you potentially pitch that back to Payne Road, then? Pitch the, pitch the curb and gutter back to Payne Road, instead of having it go to a stormwater treatment facility?
Top of the draft, yeah, I don't think we're going to be able to make that work.
All right, and like, as my statics professor always said, you can't push on a rope, so I'm just, I'm just really worried about that.
I think you had my same professors, as a matter of fact.
Yeah, I think so, too, Sean. Thanks so much.
That's all right.
All right.
Thanks, Robin. Rachel?
Yeah, a lot of my colleagues have already asked some questions that I had as well. I think the time is coming when the town itself is going to take a look at all along Payne Road, as more developments come up, as the traffic gets heavier along there, people are going to stop looking at property, and it, now may be the time to decide if we really need to put the sewers down Payne Road, rather than waiting until more sewers fail, especially in some of the older development areas. But that's not something to put on the developer this time, I believe. I have just a question, the land itself, is it heavily forested or open?
It's relatively well-treated. It's relatively well-treated, yes, good tree growth.
I was looking at something that just showed one lone tree on this map. I'm assuming that that lone tree stood for all the rest of them. Yeah, I don't know how that... I said, okay, well, that lone tree is standing right where a driveway is possibly going to go. Could be the last tree on the lot.
No, yes, but it's, there's a lot of trees all over.
Okay. Lot 5, talk to me a little bit about Lot 5, because with that 75-foot setback, the building envelope is really very small. And if you're going to have a septic system there, where would that...
A septic system to go where the, where the passing soils are, so that's going to belong to, they'll be in the front yard.
So, a septic in the front, okay.
We have a 40-foot front setback associated with these lots, so I guess it's about 40 feet if you all think of that to the building envelope.
And a driveway someplace there?
Yes, ma'am, yes, it will be, on the side of the road. Again, plenty of width, but it really is the depth. So, again, that showing 75-foot setback off of the stream, obviously, I have a point where they were trying to swing it up nicely into there. And if I would like to, you know, if possible, you know, have a 75-foot building setback at the stream, a 50-foot undisturbed buffer to the stream, that would allow, you know, perhaps, like I said, perhaps a small lawn in the backyard.
Yes, that's, as I said, that looks rather awkward and problematic. Nothing much I think that you can do about it, but that is one I noted.
You know, I appreciate that, all again, the nice part is Mr. Fustaci, he does some lots, he does packages, so I mean, the nice part is you don't then, give no limitations associated with that. You know, nice ranch, a nice ranch, we put it in there well.
Right, you can't put forbids from Colonials on everything, there's no doubt about it. And again, obviously, you know, some of the land we're looking at, unfortunately, in 2017, you know, there's a reason sometimes where it hasn't been developed, and usually it's because there's certain limitations with it. There's usually, you know, wetland issues, streams, ledge, and you're right, it's always the balancing act, if you will, trying to work around those limiting factors.
I had one other, I suppose you could call it musing, as I looked at this. Again, in looking at Lot 8, and the contortions involved to get to Lot 8 off of that part of the Hammerhead, and started to wonder how much wetlands would actually be impacted if the driveway went through more of the open land where you would, at the, there. Right, and it's, yeah, it's going to cross wetlands, but it's going to cross wetlands as well, probably to a lesser extent, but it is going to cross them.
It's going to be more on the edge.
There.
I would think about the natural frost that's associated with it.
You know, and I appreciate what you're saying, I truly do, and certainly Joe and I have had the same conversation, and I think we probably had it with Jay as well, in terms of access to that lot. But you know, perhaps what we might see is a limitation in terms of this somewhat convoluted driveway is actually, you know, a selling point to somebody for that particular piece is that, you know, they're in the neighborhood, if you will, but kind of offset to themselves a little bit off the end of the road.
All right, thank you very much.
No, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Rick?
Do you know that, Sean, do you know the bracket of building, Lot 1, Lot 5, you know what that is?
In terms of the actual size?
That is curious.
I'm having still. And just real quickly, it would be roughly, I would say, 100 feet wide by 40 feet as its worst case, Steve, probably, probably 4,000 to 5,000? 4,000 to 4,500 square feet?
Yeah, it's fine, it's hard to tell from here with my eyes.
Yeah, a 60 scale is always a nice scale as well.
Yeah, I need to start getting these sketches bigger, or I'm going to have to move closer. Okay, and then, the lot down the end, there's no thought to switch Lot 5 down to the end and make a nice...
Well, like I say, we were looking at, you know, I'll be happy to take a harder look at that, but as I remember, right, again, at my, as we were coming down the hill, the soils are getting worse, a bunch of passing soils or something. So, I don't think we have passing soil, because we're going back up the hill, obviously, with the material.
Right, and that envelope's fine. Yeah. On the total acreage, the acreage total is 20.7?
Yes.
And then you're saying 11.39 is going to be open space?
Well, Sean, right now, it's 11.39, but I'll be taking a smaller area of that.
Okay, we'll give you that. What's the total wetlands, do you know? It's probably here, I just missed it, maybe?
I don't know if I know that either.
I wonder what the, I'm just wondering...
Wetland area outside of floodway, you say 222,000, well, I see the floodway and the wetlands, it's 200 and roughly 70,000 square feet.
So, 5, 5 and 1/2 acres, if I'm doing my math correctly.
All right, still looks like you meet all the criteria, so.
Thank you. Thanks, so as always, by the time it gets to me, a lot of good stuff's already been taken, but in a way that's actually similar to the challenge faced with these sites, because as you were alluding to, Sean, a lot of the low-hanging fruit in Scarborough, when it comes to home lots, have been taken, particularly on this side of the Rim Pike. So, we do tend to see a lot of, not a lot of these, but more and more of these, and by definition, they are, they're tough, and they involve some tough trade-offs at times, but you clearly know the drill and appreciate your efforts to minimize the impacts on wetlands, and also to maintain as much contiguous, undisturbed wetlands as possible. And I also understand, you know, you've got to allow for stormwater treatment as well. I, in terms of the wetlands delineation, I think you said that you were just back out there earlier this year, 2017. What, and I don't know if I missed it, but what is your expectation for when you'll actually have an updated delineation?
This is the update, and basically what he did, the same gentleman that, the gentleman that I had do it in 2011 is the same guy I have on staff. So, you know, he basically went out there with his map and basically walked along and...
So, this map that we have, the mapping that we have is based on the 2017?
Well, again, he basically reconfirmed, if you will, his 2011 delineation. If that makes sense to you.
Okay, I wasn't entirely clear, but thank you.
Yes.
Mentioned nitrate analysis, and that will kind of fall in the bucket of the remaining due diligence that you have. Just looking back over the notes to see if we missed anything here. In terms of the, you know, possible extension of city sewer, I mean, this is, this is another dilemma that we face periodically, and we always try to be opportunistic as a board and as a town, I think, to try and encourage applicants and owners to reach out to their neighbors to see if there's a way to leverage their resources and/or their, maybe their shared motivations, whether it be shared access, curb cuts and busy roads, or things like this. At the same time, as a couple of my colleagues have said, we also understand that we can't just put it all on the latest person through the door. So, while we certainly encourage the applicant to explore whatever avenues there may be, and we appreciate that you've already reached out to sanitary district, at the end of the day, you know, don't expect you to work magic single-handedly, and if others are not so inclined, there's not much more you can do. I do, I am inclined to agree with others in saying that this does seem like a, it's a pretty, it's a bit of a reach to ask, ask someone to tie in, given that we're walking over 3,000 feet away. So, I think I'm okay with septic, given that, you know, we go through the usual due diligence there and soils and everything else, as you know well. In terms of the stream setback, I look forward to seeing more detail on how that's to be, how that's to be spelled out. And another recurring theme that we see is, you know, you have the best intentions of the applicant and the initial developer and builder, and then you have the challenge of, how do you ensure that some of those boundaries are going to be respected going forward when ownership changes hands? So, we'd be interested in hearing a little more about what you have in mind there, and taking a look at the dimensions and hardscaping, whatever else might be in play there. Beyond that, I think it's all fairly typical sketch plan material at this stage, and appreciate the introduction. Look forward to seeing the next steps. Is there any more feedback that you need from us as a board at this stage?
Joe, are you okay? Anything else?
Joe needed to say something.
My name's Joe Fustaci, I'm the applicant on this. I have a question for Jay, through the chair, if I may.
Sure.
Do you have a number of people that have Edfield systems in the Heritage Acres?
I don't have the exact number. It's more anecdotal discussion between staff who've been around for years.
I built a house in 2008, and we were cautioned about the older plumbing standards, and we utilized the new ones. And we haven't had any problems with that system. I think that there were a number of builders that went into the subdivision and built houses. The standards back in the 70s, I've been building since the early 70s, they've changed dramatically, and the failed systems, I think, were a fault of the design standards. I've built a number of septic systems, and we've had no problems with them. But as Sean pointed out, you have a 15-inch requirement in this town, and I think that's going to ensure that the septic systems are going to be satisfactory and shouldn't fail. You brought up some good points tonight that we will address at our next meeting, and I thank you for your time and your comments.
Thank you. Nick, did you have something else?
Yeah, I did. Better for worse, I had a little time to think, and...
I'll let you know in a minute, Nick.
Yeah, well, you might not be as thrilled. On the longer-term view of this all, all right, I do envision that sewer line probably running down Payne Road, right? If you build this out and you put septic in everywhere, the likelihood that down the road, any of the owners in that development, even if they wanted to and had problems with the septic system, being able to chip in and afford a line down their road and connection into a Payne Road sewer line, really is unreasonable. They're not going to do it. Once you build this thing out, nobody's going to pile their money together as a group of 10 neighbors to afford the cost of putting that pipe in and that line. So, in all of my thinking time, how expensive is it to run a line down here that doesn't connect to anything, but could be connected to in the future?
Well, I mean, I think it's, I think there's other options to now, because I think the difference, number one, obviously, the natural topography is coming over east from Payne Road. So, we're looking at, even if we do a gravity system within the road, we're talking about pumping it back up to Payne Road probably anyway, unless we want to cut across country. So, you know, our first thought is, if the septic system's out there and Payne Road does come with sewer in the future, then probably what we're talking about is one common force main. And again, I think we could probably put that out of the, and then the shoulder somewhere, perhaps, or, you know, outside of the right-of-way, in the right-of-way, or even in the east bend across some of the lots. I guess there's options there, and then if anyone's, as their septic system fails, they have to buy like an E1 pump and tie into that system, or something along those lines. But, you know, I don't think, and I see where you're coming from, have a gravity line there in case, but I think in this case, you know, if I was on the uphill side going down, that might make more sense to me than being on the downhill side of the road.
Can I chime in, Chair? I was going to say the same thing, you could do a low-pressure force main, though, and as, if septics fail, you put an E1 pump. It's very easy then, that line would be in the right-of-way, and that there would be less impact, like he was saying, to get everyone to pitch in for even that, even that small system in the shoulder, whereas putting a low-pressure force main, I don't know. I see where you're heading with that, and I think there is a way, but gravity is not it. I agree with Sean with that respect, but there are other ways and other pipes you can put in.
You know, this is kind of interesting, because I, on Two-Rod Road, I wonder how, I wonder if the sewer, I suspect it's probably not sewer on Two-Rod Road, because when we did Memory Lane, they, that was all septic. So, there's quite a few developments out in that whole area, and for one reason or another, there's no sewers out there. It could be ledger, it could be, it could be possibly that, like inherited Jake, is there were so many failures that they upgraded their systems, which costs a lot of money to do, and they decided they didn't want to go any further, you know, at that point. They brought them up to standards, so.
I think the issue is, if you're talking about, right, bringing up basically, because again, it's not like it's just, you know, we're on top of the hill, let's let it all flow down, I mean, it's up and down and up and down, you know, there's certainly, so I mean, it's a relatively, it's going to be an expensive project. And that's why I do, like you folks are talking about, you know, having government involved somehow, or, you know, I mean, somebody's got to actually kind of, you know, run with that and come up with the front money associated with that, because I do think that in terms of any existing neighborhood, I mean, you know, okay, we're going to put a pump, we're going to put a sewer system in front of you. As soon as your septic tank's gone, I think you saw some of this, out of the acorns, you know, you're going to tie into our sewer, and we're going to charge you 20 grand to do it. I mean, it just is, you know, it's, it's, it's a difficult nut to crack, it really is.
I wonder if we should get some sort of a opinion from the sanitary district, and that may...
Well, I think we sort of do. I think we, it's kind of anecdotal at this point, but it sounds like that discussion's been had.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we're speculating is all we're doing right now, you know.
So, as I mentioned at our, as an interdepartment, before each meeting, as part of our interdepartment meeting, the sanitary district director's at those meetings, but certainly we can ask him to weigh in once again on the question, provide sort of any further thoughts he has on it. That would be helpful.
Sure. We can add that to the ticket list coming out of this. I do agree, there is a bigger picture issue, and it's a little different than some other sites that we look at that are way out off Broad Turn or something like that, where the notion of sewer is very remote and hypothetical. Here, it's just close enough to be...
Right out there on Two-Rod Road, across from Memory Lane, on the other side, there's a whole development in there. And I suspect you're probably all on septic as well, you know.
One more for my thinking time. How tied are we to this 40-foot setback, and how bound by...
That was a note, I jotted to myself as well. Basically, the standard says, in a conservation subdivision design, conservation subdivision, typical conservation subdivision, in our 2 district, the lots typically get a lot smaller, I think, it's almost down to 7,500 square feet, with much reduced setbacks, I think downwards to 15-foot front yard and maybe to 5 or 10 side and rear yard. But the standard goes on to say is, if you're in a R2 district, conservation subdivision, the R2 district that does not have sewer, you default to the spacing bulk of the R2 standards, which is the 40-foot setback. But that was actually, I had my book out earlier, sort of looking at, is, if the language was crafted such, because one of the things it talks about in a standard conservation subdivision with the smaller lots, is that the board does have flexibility in terms of what those setbacks are. So, I was trying to sort of read the language to see if it was clear one way or the other, and I jotted myself a note here to explore that question a little further. So, my initial review sort of tonight, because we really haven't seen very many of these conservation subdivisions that don't connect to sewer, that are then sort of building to the standards, spacing bulk standards. So, staff will explore that question going forward and see if there is opportunity to, for the board to think about relief from the 40-foot setback.
My initial thought is, if you can shave, you know, 15 to 20 feet off each setback, you can actually shift that road just enough to get the stream setback out of the way, close enough.
Or even just make sure that that stream setback is, in fact, an undisturbed buffer, if you will.
Correct.
You know, because that would, I mean, even the way it sits right now.
If we add as a board, a little flexibility there.
If we could get down to a 15-foot front setback, then, you know...
The 25, the 25 feet I was kind of talking about for the backyard, you know, despite everything up there. You're right, that would work out beautiful for us.
So, we'll explore that.
Okay, I'm done thinking.
Thanks.
And again, I think, you know, and I know Joe and I have talked a little bit, I mean, obviously, if, I think if we could get that down to 15 feet from the front setback, I think we could be pretty comfortable in maintaining that 75-foot undisturbed buffer along that stream as undisturbed.
Well, thanks, so staff has a couple more guidance, and applicant will continue to work away, and we'll see you next time.
Well, we thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, you're getting me again right now.
Item number five, Prompto Oil Inc. requests sketch plan review for three eighteen U.S. Route One, map U forty, lot four. Jay?
Excuse me. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an application for a Prompto oil change facility, which for our standards, provided all the work is done interior, is considered a retail sale and service. And just for, to give the board a little bit of history, I've probably had, you know, three or four years of discussions, you know, once a year or so, I've, I've met with, with the applicant. And so this is something we've talked quite a bit about. And so, just to give you a little history on that, again, so the use meets our zoning criteria for the B3 district. We'll also note that a portion of this property is in a stream protection overlay district. And there is actually an unnamed tributary stream that runs along the backside of this property, which is actually on a, on a budding property. So that's a little bit in the way of a zoning context. Again, you'll receive staff comments. I think a number of the issues that we sort of flag for board to consider have to do with access management in and out of Route One. And I've already touched on the fact that we do have the stream protection district, at least on a portion of the property, although it is outside of the area where they are proposing development. Although there is a small structure within, within that area that, very dilapidated structure that probably has trees growing right through it at this point. Trying to understand what the future for that may be. Then, as board are very familiar with, this is along the Route One corridor. So we have certain design standards with regards to buffering and screening, not only just in terms of sort of landscape expectations, but screening of sort of overhead doors, queuing lines for driveway, queuing lines for vehicles in parking areas. So those are elements that we'll want to talk a little bit about. And I think at this point, I turn it back to you, Mr. Chair, and as I said, you have a post of staff comments that we can work our way through or you talked about as we move forward. I, I will, I guess I should just say, as I said at the outset of the previous item, this is a sketch plan. This is, you know, conceptual only, an opportunity for the applicant to provide the board and the public an overview of the project, certainly and the board to provide guidance. Certainly, should the project move forward, there'll be much more details that come forward and we can dive into those as, as we go. But for now, that's...
Thanks. I think one of the challenges we have sometimes with sketches is it, it's just enough to get us really into it and asking questions. And sometimes we almost try to design things on the fly. But we will, the applicant make their presentation?
Sketch is really nice, but sometimes pictures wouldn't have actually been better. I'm here today, my name is Kevin King. I work for Prompto. I'm here with one of the owners, Chris Kapithanasis, the owner of the property, Jeff Quirk, and with Sean Frank, who you guys grilled recently. I'm here basically to tell you a little bit about Prompto, what we do. And some people may not be familiar with what we do and who we are in the greater scheme of things. This photo here is our most recent Manchester Prompto. Put quite a bit into landscaping. It's a fairly large lot. These two pictures down here are from our previous, last one we built just before that, which is concrete. Cedar, Houfla, has a real nice New England look to it, as far as that's concerned. But the big thing here is what we do. Prompto does oil changes and we only really just do oil change. We do some auxiliary things. We don't have large impact motors. We work normal hours, eight AM till five thirty PM. We like to, we don't work on Sundays. So if you need an oil change on Sunday, you have to go somewhere else. Need an oil change after six thirty or five thirty or somewhere else. Can't do all the oil changes. We've got seventeen current locations in the state of Maine. We've got an additional seven in New Hampshire. This will be location number twenty-five. Our first Prompto was built in nineteen eighty-four. And if you've visited our Forest Avenue Prompto, we've changed quite a bit over the years. We now have a big distribution plant. We're the largest oil, oil change business in northern New England. And what that means is that we have to be more responsible than our competition. We have eighteen different kinds of oil. Our oil changes start at twenty-one ninety-five. Keep our prices low because we own the properties, we own the distribution, we own every bit of the supply line that goes to Prompto. We're also ISO nine thousand one compliant, which means that I can track the oil from the minute it comes to the plant in Philadelphia to the minute it goes to the car. And we're the only API-registered motor oil matters business in northern New England. So we have a lot of federal and state regulations. We deal with OSHA, EPA, DEP, MIMA, and the State Fire Department, just to name a few. So we do oil change. We're responsible for that oil, no matter where it goes, when it comes to us, where it goes after it leaves. We're very environmentally conscious because it's economically intelligent. We don't do oil changes in the park. I have a competitor in the job, my name, but he changes tires outside the building. Don't even understand how they do that, but they do that. We have oil storage tanks in our basement. This is actually a two-story building, one story below ground. It has two means of easement for employees if there was ever a fire or something. We don't imagine that's going to happen. Then get out one side, this side, but it's just good planning. And customers will drive into Q lane, come around the property, in this case, wait to be guided in, guided in, go into the waiting area, and in about six, four, two minutes they leave. So at our, or at the main mall, they go next door to get a Dunkin' Donuts coffee. Their coffee, their car's waiting outside by the time they get back. Just some of the things we do. We sell, we sell branded oil only. We have eighteen different kinds, everything from Mobil One to Benz Oil. And I guess if we're going to do oil changes, we're just going to do oil changes, we probably ought to know something about oil change. So we know a lot about that. I'm here today to answer your questions. Tom's going to talk about the site. And I tend to, I tend to never follow my notes, which is probably not all bad. But we'll be very excited to be in Scarborough. We'd be hiring, right off the bat, five or six full-time people. Our employees make about twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand dollars a year. So we serve a certain demographic that you may have from employees in Scarborough area. One of the reasons we need to build in Scarborough, we really like to build in Scarborough, is currently our Scarborough customers are going to the main mall. The main mall's so busy, we really need the Scarborough customers to stay in Scarborough so we can take care of all the customers in Scarborough. That's kind of what we're hoping for. So, next up?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you very much. I'd be glad to answer your question if you got it.
Sean Frank, great architect. Just a quick introduction to the site itself. I think we're all familiar with it in terms of the location, over that one piece of... Millbrook, I believe, Avenue or Millbrook Road is just across the street. It was generally efficient to have Route One. There is a divided island at the end and actually, in coordination with staff, we actually relocated the driveway down a little bit. What we really want to have, obviously, just right in, right out, associated with the trap. We don't want to have people trying to turn in from this way, but we don't want people trying to pull back out again this way. So we did get this down, it was probably pretty associated with that. As Kevin stated, the idea is basically the tap that comes in, they queue up, free of rest, if you will, run up against the drives and then coming up back into the site. They sit, they in their vehicles, and some of it actually backed inside and the, the work actually stops and then they go into the office and they come back out and they're happy and proceed now. Water is available, the U.S. Route One, people will access that. Sewer is a little bit off. We have had some initial conversations with the sanitary district and look forward to how we can, that can through the sanitary district, which we're capable of with that. As we did discuss, we do have a shearing protection district over in this area here. As Jay stated, there is an old building and an old driveway. The driveway is actually, it's almost a vegetated driveway at this point in time. But certainly, our intention is to remove that from erosion from standpoint, I'll probably, it is, you know, maybe like I have a double layer, erosion is intense, erosion from on the uphill side all along that edge. And again, I'll probably basically do it just to remove that material out of there to monetize it, to protect it, to set it out of the, the invigorate itself, maybe some, some kind of type of landscape associated with it. There is a seventy-five foot stream setback. The stream actually only goes up to a certain point by the water here. Again, from the building standpoint, we have stayed out of it. We do have an intrusion within this area here in terms of this associated car, and again, as stated, trying to balance that. It's also, there's a vegetable zone back and, I guess, there's a fifty foot setback associated with that. For this whole area, basically, this has been all off limits in terms of any proposed development. And Joe reminded me, up here, again, this is the actual stream. So again, it's almost like they had a radius from the young guys, from that seventy-five foot mark. At this point, it was becoming a square. And I believe there's a model where they actually had D P on site, kind of, looking at the faces of that stream. So, from a monetary standpoint, we're talking probably three or four catch basins within the pavement itself. They actually have oil and water separated. They'd be very happy to build in terms of a three-chambered system from that system. Again, some type of storm on a management, keep the area of this area here. I should relocate that driveway, help us out a bit in terms of being able to do something like that. But perhaps again, we can understand so, so, so. The propane tank here, again, to keep the building, I've talked so much about the building itself in terms of the side we'd be looking at along the Route One side, basin Route One, the entrance doors, if you will, the overhead doors along the side, understanding obviously the associated landscape and the, the, and the, and the...
Just real quickly, if I can, maybe go through some of these, something we do understand we're on Route One and the design guidelines associated with that. There was a discussion regarding perhaps a sidewalk, if you will, along Route One. I think the applicant's comfortable with that up to the property line here. Again, to this, this, the existing side, we still want to call that, it's actually a guardrail. That's where the large public do cross Route One. So let's be able to terminate that, you know, little sidewalk, if you will, up to the guardrail and to our property line, you know, side. At that point, the guardrail there because it's about, it's useful going down and all these things. This, you know, structures that...
Eventually, we're going to connect the dots.
Lighting will be building mounted fixtures. We, we think that's all we're going to need associated with that. We'll have a, a pylon sign and we will certainly look at the type of design standards associated with that. Again, we certainly understand all the issues in regards to the landscape and buffering associated with it. We'll certainly work with the fire department in association with a, a fire access. I do think it's a lot of those different things in terms of...
It looks like a bit of pavement up here, but obviously there are the exits coming in from there. Maybe we can speed that down just a gear, but, you know, obviously we do need sufficient room. We can be able to come in and get out as opposed to, to the side of the site.
Again, certainly look to, be happy to see if we can tighten that up a little bit. But it's probably going to be pretty close to what we're looking at there. Snow storage, we'll certainly take a look at that. And I did discuss a little bit about the demolition on the site. So with that, Mr. Chairman, again, I conclude my presentation and certainly do my best to answer any questions the report has. We are here for a sketch. Again, obviously, the whole point of that was to try to obtain the feedback from the board before we spent a lot of time and effort in terms of firm and upper design of the site itself. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Maybe we start down the seventh time.
All right. I'll take a drink of water.
Thank you.
I noticed you talk faster with every presentation. I like that. You get points for that.
I do have to talk fast.
You still do a very thorough job. And I like the colored print you guys gave me too. Are all these trees existing, the most part?
Again, I, unfortunately, my landscape architect sometimes get, you know, in terms of, but it is wooded down through there. It is a wooded site. So it is wooded down through there. And I think that's, when they add those trees, I think they're just trying to show that it is an existing wooded site.
Can you tell me what this little happy box is? Is that a house there that I'm just, can't remember?
Right here?
Yeah.
Yes, there is an old building there, believe it or not. It's, like Jay was saying, it's very dilapidated. There are probably some trees going off of it. There is actually a driveway. When I, when I first looked at this, quite a lot of, the driveway was all cracked up. But I mean, certainly this is still accessible down to the, again, the building itself was, even that was built, but, you know, even up since then, this is happening, regurgitated itself and the building is, you know, if it could kick, it might just...
Yeah, I think I know that building. Okay. The parking that you have, I'm guessing it's based on past experience since you've done this a few times successfully?
Right. I mean...
You'll need to come back up to the podium if you want to answer questions. Thank you.
Parking for us is, is planning for employees ten to fifteen years down the road, if you might be. Initially, we'll need about six slots. But we, you know, at the main mall, we'll have ten, ten employees on per day, be mostly for us to take.
Right.
But we're, that's our, just permanent.
Yeah. So if you've done twenty-four of these, you know, I think you're confident that that's all you're going to need, I'm sure.
Right. I mean, the thing, you know, obviously, the site runs itself good for car queuing.
Yeah.
Because some of our older sites like Pittford, that our estate took so much property, I think we're on like six thousand square feet. Q lanes are just really, really tight.
Yeah.
Try to eat yourself a couple of years.
Okay. All right. I like that you haven't had a major spill or anything ever, I guess. Have you been in business since nineteen eighty-four? Is that when you started?
Yes. That's when Chris started the first one.
Yeah?
Yep.
That's a good safety record. All right. And I guess so there's, looking at this sketch and I think what I gathered from the notes, it's right turn in and right turn, it's right turn in, right turn out.
That's correct, yes. Yes.
You're not going to be less of traffic.
The whole intent is right turn in, right turn out.
I like that too.
I mean, there's the end of the island. And again, I understand that, you know, we really need to be, obviously, to be able to queue around and come back in again. My initial design actually had the driveway, you know, as far over as I can, you know, just like the staff would pull it over. So at least that it's a full, the full island in front of us. It's over the left side and you know...
Yeah, it's probably a good idea.
You can't control sometimes, you know, what people try to do, but...
Yeah, Route One, right down the street from the police station, I don't think you'll have...
Well, that's a nice thing. And I do think, unfortunately, it's busy enough that I, hopefully, people won't try to get foolish.
Yeah, I doubt, I doubt you'll see much of that. Is it going to look very similar to this one with the cedar siding?
Yeah.
That's nice. I think it looks good. I could use a Prompto there, so I'm good with it.
Thanks.
I think we've learned on the planning board that sometimes dilapidated buildings can have historic value. Have you done any checking?
I can't say as I've done that, although if that one has historic value, I would be, I would be very surprised, to be perfectly honest with you. I don't think there's any basement to it whatsoever. It's really one room, isn't it?
Yeah. That was moved for the wide Route One back in sixty-eight.
Could you, could you, would you mind coming up and just introduce yourself? Thanks.
Thanks.
It's on, it's really more for the TV.
Okay. Oh, yeah, Jeff Quirk, under the property. And that building in sixty-seven or sixty-eight, they widened Route One. And there was a couple of buildings, which is now the granite place, the place where they used on granite. That was one of them, it was moved back and put on a foundation. This one was moved back and put on a real short foundation. It was supposed to have a new wall. And they moved it back and never occupied it, never ran it. So it's literally hasn't, and when I bought it, I was, we had an oil company. And I was going to be in our office. And I later found out after I bought it that Scarborough's only restricted in the state. So I just kind of left it for a while. But it is, it's pretty rough. But this building has historic value. The raccoons enjoy it. I don't think there's any historic value.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would be remiss if I didn't kind of reflect Susan Ogless for a few minutes. And that is because the parking is located essentially along the front, along Route One. The standards do ask that whenever possible, the parking be located to the rear or the side of the building. I don't really see an alternative to what you have there. But there are some strict landscape standards in terms of screening of the, of that area. So I... So I, I know that Ms. Ogless will be really interested in what you do.
And we do want to say that obviously with parking, there's potential, and again, they close at 5:30, so if you don't want it, the headlights, we don't show any. The intent here is what they were showing on this initial sketch was just being a landscape burn. So a burn there, if you will. This is actually lower than the road itself, so we have a little bit of help associated with the park.
Well, as I said, I suspect that's going to be, you, you will be questioned in terms of the, of the plantings that go in, the type of trees and the caliber measures and just about everything else there. I have a question on when the oil comes in, where is it unloaded? Or how is it?
If I, if I could, just to sort of build on that, there's a, you know, reference in the application of the oil handing, oil handling procedures and maybe to piggyback on what you're asking, Rachel, if you could just very briefly walk us through what that kind of chain of custody is and how that process works.
In this particular case, in this particular case, there are box truck and oil truck. So they would come here and back up to bay three. And they, they have a hose they take from that, they actually take it downstairs. We don't like to take the risk on outside gallons of oil. So we actually have our own employee goes downstairs and builds it from the top of the oil container. When, that's how that oil goes in. When a car comes in, there's actually a hole in the floor. It's about four foot by about two and a half feet wide. All the oil, when it comes down, the car goes straight down into the basement with this container that catches it. When that container gets to a certain level, there's a pump that pumps it into a waste oil container, another 1,000 gallon container that's in the basement. When Clean Harbors comes in, they likewise come in here, turn around, back up here, they again, take the hose down, their hose down to the basement, and they pump the oil into the container. The importance of how you, how we handle oil is we have to do business with a vendor that does that for their primary business. Clean Harbors has a division that just does waste oil. And, you know, they, because we're responsible for that oil no matter where it goes. I've had even, I think Farmington called me this last year, wanted to pick up some more oil from their waste oil burner. And we can't do, we can't give anybody any oil. We don't, can't give oil. Because we, we're responsible for where it goes. So some, somebody, actually, the other one who called me this year was one of the, might muffle, might smuffle down in Rochester, one of my barrels. So we are responsible for that product wherever it goes. We have special places that we do. Did that answer your question?
Yeah. That, that does. Thank you.
Follow-up question. Is that all done after hours?
No, that's usually, well, it, it could be before hours. We don't really take oil after 5:30 at night, but the guy might get there at 7 o'clock in the morning. It just depends on what sketch house. Sometimes if, we don't allow anybody even to work the warehouse before 6:00 in the morning. So the sooner they can get there, the sooner. When the oil truck goes back to our warehouse, it has to be 100% unloaded for the oil truck. We can't leave any oil in the oil truck because there's too much risk to that, even though it's an access that might never occur, you know, planned for, it won't occur. Does that answer that?
Yeah.
I do think, and I think it's something I was remiss in terms of specifically spelling out to the board, that this does have a full basement associated with it, where all the tanks associated with this are. So everything is, you know, within concrete walls, which basically does act as secondary containment associated with that. And obviously, they have a lot of protocols associated with handling that.
The oil tanks in the basement, I don't know that we need to talk about this because, you know, we have a, we have a burn around the oil. So then, as a third containment, the building itself is the burn. We have no cremation. Okay? So in other words, you know, even, we don't even have a mop sink in the basement. Likewise, like that, we actually have our mop water, they put it by Clean Harbor. That mop water doesn't even go into the system. So we go through seven gallons per day per location. That water, told him to study by gallon tank. Clean Harbor will pump out the waste oil, also pump out some water. It's a question about whether we need to do it. But we're somewhat careful about what we do because we live here, too. So just to kind of accompany the philosophy. Thank you.
And I guess one, one final question. When, when you have dead-end lots, which essentially this is by the standards, there, there has to be a place or a way for the vehicles to safely turn around. What, as I, as I look at that, if we have fire trucks that come in there, is there space for them to turn around, to back up?
That was a good question in terms of, you know, and I, and I, after that, I mean, I do need to get the fire department or something, make sure that we are bad.
It's just one, one thing that I did, again, okay.
I actually met with the fire department. They promised me they'd use their short fire truck. I didn't have to have turnaround for the big fire truck. So I met with each, each different division. Actually, I didn't tell you.
I appreciate that being in. That's good information to have when you submit the, the plan. I had, was musing a little bit and had wondered about just an emergency exit where you already have the curb cut and the old.
Oh, no, 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 no. No, 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 they won't let me.
Okay.
Jay won't let me do that.
You wouldn't?
Well, the ordinance, the planning board review process suggests that each site should only have one curb cut for access management purposes unless the applicant can demonstrate that a secondary access would provide a beneficial to the traffic flow, access management, traffic safety. So the, the onus is really to demonstrate that it's a net positive, not just a net neutral.
All right. As I was looking, the, the curb had already been cut there on the old driveway. That's what I was thinking in terms of simply holding it as an emergency exit option. All right. I think that answers my questions. Thank you. And just get ready for the landscape questions from Ms. Ogless.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks. Robert?
Yeah. So just following up on Ms. Anderson's question about the loading and unloading, I'm wondering if that's a curbed area there then where the truck comes in? Are you planning to curb that to confine it for any reason? In, in the event that there's a valve or a hose leak on the truck that comes and loads or unloads anything?
The guy has hazmat pads that he can slide underneath the, the valve. We actually, when it comes to the warehouse, we actually slide a tub underneath the joint. Pulls back and unload. We could certainly do that.
Okay. And so you do it every time or only when you see a leak?
No, actually, we only ever do it when it comes back to the warehouse. We haven't, we've not had.
Okay. I need to talk about then the stream zone. Can you, Sean, you said, it's like it disappears right there where the loading and unloading is going to go. Talk to me about the stream there.
The actual stream itself.
Yep.
This is actually, it's a mother fine drainage rail that's coming down in through here. It was actually at this location that it was classified as a stream, if you will.
Yep.
Which is really, again, a very small tributary, if you will, coming down through Mill, to Millbrook, which is the crossing. So, you know, what I'm holding is, this is the stream district, if you will. The stream protection district is from this stream volume over here, this volume part over here. Again, for this small strip, I basically helped, I showed the 75-foot stream.
Setback, right, to the structure.
Yes.
And what I'm concerned about is that weight, the loading and unloading is going to happen very close to that 75-foot and without a curb to contain if anything happens with the truck. I'm, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with that being.
Again, we actually have a, this is a wall all on here, so I think it's something a little new wall associated with that. Extend that up six inches.
Excellent.
It will be, you know, I mean, the thing will be, it will be a catch basin, I could see.
Yep.
I think the other part of that would be is, you know, you have a lot of stuff.
Okay. And those catch basins are for stormwater kind of thing?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And then the dumpster is that, and I, I've noted in your plan, too, that it's primarily just cardboard and packaging materials in the, it's a, at the top of the page, it says prompto maintains a double dumpster system. I just want to make sure that there's no liquids going in the outside dumpster.
There's two dumpsters.
Mm-hmm.
First dumpster is cardboard and container.
Right.
Second dumpster is for the oil.
And that's going to be in that same enclosure?
That enclosure has a lip all the way around.
Okay. And that's for the waste oil filters once they've been drained?
Yeah. So in case there's ever spilled there.
Okay. And there's, there's, may, what I would recommend that you do, too, for, for when you come forward is talking a little bit more about that and what your typical waste oil filter dumpster looks like. Because having that outside is right, you know, within 75 feet of that stream setback is, you know, makes the hairs on the back of my neck go up just a little bit.
I appreciate that.
Okay?
You make sure you have information.
All right. Excellent. While you're right there, Kevin, what's the typical volume of both virgin oil and waste oil that you maintain onsite on a daily basis?
Well, we're only allowed to put 90%, so we're looking at probably, probably looking at a couple thousand gallons of virgin oil. The newest thing is because we have so many varieties of oil, we have specialized box containers of oil.
Okay.
Okay? And, you know, and we could have barrel oil as well. And we have large tank oils.
And how large is your waste oil container?
Waste oil containers, 3,000 gallons.
Okay. Great. Okay. So we're talking 3,000 gallons at any given time, but I like how you're talking about secondary and tertiary treatment with the no floor drain in the basement. That's, that's good. And then the grading of the site is, are you envisioning the grading, Sean? Obviously, you're going to be toward catch basins kind of thing.
Yes.
But if you can just talk a little bit about the grading, which way it's going to drain.
Talking obviously if we move one down, we are lower, so the thought is, I'm thinking like a catch basin here, catch basin here, catch basin in the center, to the, to the oil water separator and then.
Okay. And so in line with those, those catch basins, are we talking about another oil-water separator in line with the treatment train in case anything happens in the parking lot?
Basin, basin, basin.
Oil-water separator.
Water separator, stormwater filter or something.
Something, and then it happens. Okay. Good. That's all my questions. Oh, one more thing. How much disturbed area are we talking about here?
It's only a 1.1 acre site, so it's, total disturbance will be 0.6, 0.7.
Okay. And, and again, to, to just echo, maintaining the, the natural vegetation is important and understanding landscaping as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Nick?
I don't have a whole lot else to add. I was thinking of the queuing lines. If I was stuck here in this man's car and I got a phone call and I have to go somewhere and I've got two, two cars queued behind me, three in front of me and three getting an oil change, you know, how do I get out of that situation?
Well, you're right. I would say is, you know.
Like, once you're here, if there's two or three cars behind you, then, you know, the nice part is the employees are there. I mean, I think you slide on through, get it back in there.
And I've utilized promptos before, but, you know, I, I look at it and say, geez, do you have, I mean, I think Rachel may have mentioned it, do you have an opportunity for a, you know, unofficial quick turnout through that driveway or something? You know, maybe a do not enter, emergency vehicle signs somewhere around there, you know, to deter people from using as a pass-through, but kind of leaving it available.
I'd have to look at the grades, but again, I think it was the proximity more to the stream than anything else, I think was.
Yeah. Because this happens to us when, this is a similar site to Concord. The advantage here is Concord has a one, one-way driveway. This is actually widened up to two, two ways. So if somebody got stuck there, if you have an employee stopped the car, push it over and something like that. I mean, this is actually a little wider than I would have. Specifically for that. I would love to have this driveway over here too as an emergency stand for people to be, who are stuck in the driveway. I was told I couldn't have it. So whatever you'd like us to do.
I strongly recommended that you not go forward.
And the only thing else I'll echo is the need for the landscaping, and you know this, and Susan will certainly let you know this when she returns. The dumpster enclosure as well, I think, you know, it's highly visible, kind of in an open area there, just to make sure that that's going to be made with some sort of materials that are sturdy and look nice and, because they're going to be visible as you come into the property. So that's it.
Thank you. Roger?
Okay. Just a couple of questions. Sean, are you, are you thinking that people driving south on Route One will be able to come right in or do they have to go further down Route One and make a loop around and come back?
Right. It's only going to be northbound in traffic is all we're talking about. Northbound in, northbound out.
Okay. Because on your sketch there.
Yes.
On your sketch there, that, that little needle on that island there doesn't appear to be on yours. Maybe it is, I just can't see it.
I'm sorry, what are we looking at?
That needle, you know how it narrows down that, the island?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's so for the left turn and traffic to go to Millbrook.
Millbrook, yeah.
Okay. So anybody who wants to head south, they're going to have to go north and somehow make a turn and into the town hall and then.
But again, I don't think that's unique and certainly not, you know, not to Scarborough and certainly not unique to Route One. I mean, certainly there's a lot of areas where that, you know, they have divided highways and that, you know, your access is limited to the side of the divide you're on.
Okay. I, I'm just kind of curious about the, the basement, too. I think was mentioned that the pit is going to be four feet deep?
Basement's eight, basement's eight feet deep.
Okay.
The platform that blocks up, if the pit is actually about four foot by about two and a half foot wide.
Oh, okay. All right.
That's, that's just a cut in the floor.
Yeah, okay.
We have full basement with OSHA steps going on both sides.
Okay. All right. I was just kind of curious about that. Actually, I, you know, I think it's going to be great, great business on Route One, so I have no further.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't have a whole lot to add. I appreciate the introduction and the attention to detail and some of these materials and the kind of overview of the business model and the thought process. kind of overview of the business model and the thought process. We don't always need to know all the nitty-gritty details about the business, but in this case, it's.
We, we, we thought it might be good to have a little introduction to the company in this case.
So we appreciate you being prepared with that, and certainly some, you know, it is, again, sketch stage, so certainly some, some more to do here. I, I will say, and there, I guess, were a couple references to it. The architecture, you know, to the extent that we've seen it, I think, looks good or promising. You know, it is sort of the New England vernacular. Just for the record, you don't have to have a cupola. That may be, that may be part, I, I appreciate that might, maybe that's part of your branding at this point, but just for the record, you don't have to have a cupola to, to meet our design standards. But we'll look for more detail on that and, and landscaping, as, as was referenced. There was discussion about providing curbing or knee wall at that loading area, which I agree that that's important, given the proximity to the stream area there. A little more detail on dumpster, the two different dumpsters and the enclosure detail. And sort of, I guess, getting back to the landscaping idea, the screening and buffering in general, particularly with the traffic along, sorry, the parking along Route One. So, with that, I think that pretty well sums it up. Do you need anything more from us at this point?
Gentlemen, you're good.
Everyone, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
CPRC Group requests sketch plan review for Seventy Pleasant Hill Road, map R-77, Lot Seven.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to be sure I have my right comments here.
There are two of these Pleasant Hill items.
This is the sketch plan, correct?
Yep.
I want to be sure, yep, okay, CPRC, sorry. As you just noted, this is yet another sketch plan for the board, so again, an opportunity for the applicant to provide a overview of their conceptual build-out or, or design for their property, and for the board to provide some overarching commentary as the applicant moves forward. As noted, this property is in the industrial district. The site's actually home to a, a transfer station, which many of you at the table here may have frequented upon occasion, where the town currently has a lease agreement or contractual agreement to enable residents to dump yard waste and bulk, bulk materials at the site, and it ultimately gets transferred away. The applicants are proposing to move their operations and reutilize the site for, I believe it was, six lots, six industrial lots, moving forward. So, just a couple of comments, just in terms of, at this point, process. Really, the first step is a subdivision process to divide the lots out. In talking with the applicants, they're not, they, they have some conceptual plans they've provided for the ultimate build-out of the lots, but that's not necessarily what they're going to do. They're, they may lease or sell, or who knows what's going to happen with the lots, but just give you a sense of that. So really, staff comments focused primarily on the subdivision component, and in that, we've really talked a bit about just trying to understand issues around access easements and access management, infrastructure easements and connections in terms of sewer, in particular, I think this sanitary district was interested in, but all the others as well. So I guess with that, yeah, I think I've sort of touched on the key elements for staff at this point, and, sorry, back to you, Mr. Chair.
All right, and I'll turn over to the applicant.
I think it's on already. My name is Darren Sayers. I'm from Stan Tech, and I have with me here Jim Hilton from CPRC Group. They'll help answer any questions relevant to the substance and vision of the property. But I'm going to walk you through the proposed subdivision plan as it stands right now. The site, as Jay mentioned, is on Pleasant Hill Road. It is founded by Glasgow Road here to the right of the, Glasgow Road, Gibson Roads over here, and the Runway Roads, where we have hundreds of all four sides basically. It is a almost fifteen acre site. It's Lot Seven, and that's about Row Seventy Seven, Row Seventy Seven. As Jay mentioned, the community recycling center is, is this portion of the site right here. The rest of the site, CPRC uses for the internal conversion business. The business itself is under, currently under DCP by sixteen, for all the solitudes. They mentioned this is an industrial zone. Interes in this existing site, again, existing, interesting, located, also Glasgow Road, and the primary entrance is the, is the Gibson Road. And then obviously, they do have community recycling center, that is a little bit of a problem. We do have, resource-wise on the site, there are, there's the area of wetlands, which we have delineated. It's not really shown on the existing conditions map, but it's shown on our subdivision plan as well, just a little over there. It's about thirty-four thousand square feet. It's going to be, be not significant, non-significant, or not of special significance. Also on the site, we have two detention ponds, two wet detention ponds that are, that are existing. And both of them drain to, to Pleasant Hill Road, in addition to Glasgow Road, other EOT facilities, and so it's, so that's the existing site. As Jay mentioned, we are proposing a six-spot industrial subdivision. We've got a couple of pieces of property left out, that will have detention ponds on them, that have been retained, you know, by CPS. Lots, similar to closing right now, varying size from fifty thousand to a hundred and three thousand square feet. I'm giving a lot of it in stone, twenty thousand square feet, so a little over there in the stipulation. We're proposing two primary access, accesses to the site, again, utilizing the existing access off of Glasgow Road, off of Gibson Road. We're proposing right now, two private streets, two short-street streets, which, which otherwise anyway, would probably not be, be just all the best of the property. We did show a conceptual site plan, partly for our use and also for your application, to give an idea of what development on the site might look like. So again, this shows the two accesses off of, primary accesses off of Glasgow, off of Gibson. The one off of Gibson was for two, two of the lots, and the one off of Glasgow was for a pretty larger lot. The piece of the property that's the main recycling center is just a zone, and a lot here, which contains an entrance, a driveway of the zone, off of Runway Road. But our thinking right now, as water-wise, is to create or reconfigure this existing wet pond, near the wetland, towards the site. There's a, there's a fairly large, almost no others play at the access point, but it would be larger, I think, than this existing one. We would be considering this site, I know Rob has been asking this question, would be considering the second redevelopment, potential projects, programs, totally in purpose, so we'll be looking to, to, to be able to redevelop it. Treating all of our stormwater from development, is, is single wet pond. Really thoughts, who are the ones who are hearing the site comments, so I know you place some detail there. Utility-wise, we have water, public water, and so on, on both sides, so we can bring this all in, sort of, direction. And.
You did?
A little bit of work grading-wise, we can want to increase the material that we have created on the site, converting, or provide material, which we would, if we're using on these sites, for the lots, we would create some, some work for us, for drainage, or adding out these larger buildings. So there's a grade, something to grade, so I think our intention would be to, to bring this body of this subdivision, buildings, to private streets. We may phase out of it, fully, let it have an application, and then phase of development, do most of the mass grading, and hopefully, we'll phase, have, stay that, that's individual sites, or, or site. I think that's.
Robin?
Yes, I would love to. Who dares? This project is so bittersweet, because commercial paving has been such a good partner for so many environmental projects that I've worked on personally throughout the state of Maine. They serve a really important role as far as beneficially reusing otherwise waste materials. So as much as I love to see the sort of, you know, regrowth in Scarborough, it's, it's, it's hard to have that resource leave Scarborough. So just to get, first things first, straight, the transfer station is staying? Yes, no?
I would.
Okay, thanks.
We have a contract with the town.
Yeah.
About nineteen.
Okay.
We haven't discussed any contact with the town.
Okay.
We're proposing a attached building site on that, or, that redeveloped, you know, or, or.
Okay.
Find a way for, for, in the future, if the town.
Okay.
While we won't be repurposing materials in Scarborough, we'll continue as business to repurpose materials.
Excellent.
We run the Riverside Transportation, we entered into a long-term contract, this will be twenty-plus years, just this past year, which has allowed us to access our other main processing facility, that'll be right outside Ballarat, which we have systematically, it's a couple hundred acre piece of property next to the airport up there, or Scrabble Road. We have systematically improved the permits, the permits on that site, we have a week of Thanksgiving to start to finalize the last piece of permit, so that everything that we do, it's part of, most part of the specialways, which are, which are probably various, probably, shingles, wood, gypsum, which can be brick asphalt, that will be too, so materials will be available, and many of them just won't be available to be made from Scarborough.
Got it.
So they'll be around.
Thanks, thanks for that. I appreciate it. So, a couple of things, and I'm really pleased to have Darren as your engineer, too, and I, I think that he's got a good handle on what's going on here so far, because it sounds like you're moving into the voluntary remediation action plan sooner rather than later. So I was wondering if, and what that means is basically, we're taking a potentially, a site with some potential contamination and getting a no further action from DEP, which is, is a huge undertaking. And I really applaud you all for, for doing that. So I'm wondering, have you talked at all, I, I understand you're using some of the existing piles as, as inert fill, or beneficial reusing it as fill onsite, as Darren mentioned. So will you be sharing a sampling and monitoring plan of those soils that will be used as inert fill with the town and with the planning board? Because the question comes from, if those are now the soils that stormwater will run across or percolate through, we want to make sure that those are clean soils, Jim.
They are, or state ones.
Exactly, yeah.
For sure. Number one, the property is itself built on material, which we have.
Okay.
And has been for, for a long, long years.
Mm-hmm.
We have, while we have different sized piles, and different types of material that are all material, we also have some material that is finished product.
Okay.
Any of the materials that we use on the site, not the all-material pile material, so they would be made into finished products.
Okay.
It would be our beneficial use license material, and we would, that'd all be the VRAP program, which we're talking about.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, the department, and the town would be locked up with that process.
Excellent, and, and do you, either of you foresee there being observation wells and monitoring wells around this site in perpetuity or in, over a certain period of time?
I, I don't envision that, but.
Okay.
We're in the front end of the process, not.
In the back end?
Through the back, so I can't.
If you could just keep us informed, perhaps, through the staff, that would be, that would be great. Again, it's bittersweet, I love to, I'm, I'm excited about it.
Love it.
So Darren, can you talk a little bit about what the disturbed area is that we're talking about here, the, the, a number of acres, kind of a thing?
Well, the whole site is disturbed.
Got it. That's a good point.
The, well, I, yeah, I mean, the, the weather, the results.
Right, okay. But you don't have, you don't plan on having any off-site, off-site lay-down areas or anything like that for any of the materials? Okay. A couple, and I know that you're still thinking about what to sort of morph the stormwater features into. That's, I'm, I'm very interested in that, as you can imagine. But also, one of the things that is also very bittersweet about this project is the, the large amount of wetland impact fees. I think it's on page three or something like that. It's approximately thirty-four thousand square feet, wetland impact area could be possi, could possibly be mitigated by paying a fee in lieu into a compensation fund. What happens with those funds, and I, and this is more kind of for staff, too, is those wetland impact fee funds go to a state program. And, and so if we could work with staff, maybe, to find a local project that those funds could be filtered to, perhaps in the same watershed, or just in the same town, otherwise, that big check that you have to write goes to the state, and the town of Scarborough doesn't get any benefit from it all.
Yep.
So if I could just put the bug in staff's ear to sort of be thinking about that, and I'd be happy to think of a couple things if you need help. But otherwise, this is, you keep doing what you're doing, so glad to have Darren on board for this. Excellent.
Thanks. Rachel?
Yeah, I, I really appreciate the fact that that slide is in color, because I must confess, as I was looking at the, the, the map, the schema in our packet, I was having a great deal of difficulty figuring out where the roads were, where the parking lots were, and, and what the access was. I, I know this is preliminary. I am looking at, you know, a reasonable amount of green, where that hasn't existed before, and I assume that that green is going to be landscaping, trees.
Right, yeah, it would, it would be, we've actually talked about doing some burning between, between lots as well, and, and.
So we would be seeing a, a gain of, you know, a substantial gain, to me, of, yeah, yeah. That slide, actually, and, and your response answered my question, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Rick?
I know you haven't got, the buildings aren't dedicated to anybody right now, whatever, but, and you're, that's just kind of a conceptual thing, but it is very well thought out, how you have, or at least to me, it appears to be very well thought out, how you have the, the bigger loading areas on the buildings with less parking, so that's more of a material handling, and then the, what looks like an office building has a little baby, so, you know, if you don't have anybody in mind, it's actually pretty well thought out, from what I can see, for potential, potential clients. So, I guess there's really, is mixed use, they can use it for anything that fits the industrial park criteria, Jay? So we don't really.
Correct, yep.
Yeah, okay. I mean, that's areas, that's what that's used for now, right? So, yeah, I think it looks really good, actually. I don't really have any questions, other than the comment that you don't have, if you don't know what those buildings are for yet, you did a nice job of laying them out.
Yeah, that, that, we were just, again, as a client, to help imagine what types of buildings have to be, you know, played on, you know, I think, we, we did want to know if, if, I assume you just referred to the office, like, associated with, with a thousand, a hundred acres, so. Again, if we come forward with an additional second place, it may be, it may be a little different, and promises.
All right, and I have one more. So I'm sure my esteemed colleague here will make sure that all the water's treated well. But is that all, can you educate me, is that all fed from piping, from, do you have stormwater drains in there, or whatever, that, that all feed back down to that filtration system?
Yeah, imagine, the majority of this site will be drained to this, this either conveyed conditions or swales, or, I mean, if I could, there will come out, I think, outfall structure, out of control structure at the time.
Okay, so it'll be a mix of how the water gets there, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, for the time being, I think, decided not to touch this, this, it's not a control structure.
Okay. Is that last piece right there, the white piece, is that part of the development, actually, but not, you're not?
It's, it's, you're open on.
Oh, you don't own that? Okay, I'll just, it looked like it should have been, but.
It's, it's.
Yeah, oh, that's fine. Okay. Yeah, I don't have any, I don't have any questions right now.
Thanks.
Actually, I don't really have any questions either. I think it's going to be very interesting. Robin, obviously, asked some very pertinent questions, and, and I think what Rick said about the layout looks, looks good at this point. It's going to be really interesting to see how this develops along the way, so I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Yeah, I would agree, it seems to be up, seems to be up to a promising start, and I'm looking forward to seeing how it evolves. Definitely have a little bit of a different look and feel, as you noted, less impervious area. One of the staff's comments, and I don't know if this is something you're prepared to speak to now, or could present to us at a future meeting, would be sort of a, a brief overview of sort of the VRAP program, and how that works in terms of remediation of the site.
Actually, Robin, I would like to mark.
Well, maybe we can have a workshop on it or something, but I.
Or a show, or a two or three.
Sure, that's something that, we'll just file that under, to be continued, then. So, right. No, I don't, I don't think I have anything to add, and we'll look forward to seeing the next iteration. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, staying on Pleasant Hill Road. Item number seven, BNE Enterprises, Inc. requests a site plan amendment, 148 Pleasant Hill Road, map R 78, lot 45. Jay?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So staying with the, uh, industrial district theme, though we're transitioning away from sketch plan and into actual, uh, potentially actionable items by the board, if you're so inclined this evening. Um, this is a site plan amendment for property on Pleasant Hill Road. It is at 148 Pleasant Hill Road. Many of board members may recall this site from, I believe it was last summer it was initially approved, um, in a, um, for a few, uh, some building expansions. It was actually Cobble Hill Trailers at that time was going to be moving into the site. Um, and board members are probably familiar, there's been a lot of site work happening by and large. The parking area has been redone, the stormwater facilities have been in, and a lot of the other work has been done. But the initial tenant, the Cobble Hill Trailer, um, is no longer part of the project, and there's a, a new tenant, uh, Herc Enterprises. And in a discussion that our, uh, commercial code inspector was having with, uh, folks, um, it came up that there's actually going to be a fuel, uh, fuel tanks brought on site, and that sort of raised some flags because those weren't on the plans, and also raised some pla, flags as we are in the aquifer protection district area. So we sort of pumped the brakes and said, well, we need to do a, a site plan amendment and go through the review process before those can, uh, be established. So the applicants before you with that site plan amendment, really it's modifying, uh, sort of the building in the middle of the, of the site is getting, uh, quite a bit smaller than the original approval and bringing in the, uh, fuel tanks. As noted, the applicants prepared, uh, some documentation as to how they, uh, proposed to meet the standards of the aquifer protection overlay district. Staff had, um, some outstanding questions in those regards to be sure that we're hitting all those standards. Um, let's see, what else did I have jotted down here for my notes? I think those are really, I think the aquifer protection and, and the fuel tanks were really the big takeaways, and then just in terms of the site, there were some very modest, uh, sort of site adjustments that we noticed in terms of dumpster locations, um, ensuring that we have the emergency access through the proposed gates, um, and finally, uh, pretty detailed with regards to the, uh, the guard rail that's currently on site that we believe is intended to be removed, but want to be sure of that. Um, and I think the other one we, um, that was raised had to do with, uh, understanding the details for the site lighting around the fuel tanks, uh, that that's a full cutoff fixture and all those typical things we look at. So, uh, with that, Mr. Chair, I will turn it back to you at this time.
Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, thank you, Mr. Vago Technics. I do apologize that they, uh, the environmental engineer for, uh, Herc Mentals, uh, unfortunately couldn't make it to their meeting this evening. Uh, I'll do my best, uh, in terms of, uh, batting for her on this one.
Um, as Jay stated, I think everyone's pretty familiar with the site, uh, Pleasant Hill Road here, we got a drive consultation, uh, the existing building, a number of, used to see a Pinsky, I think was the last one that we had in there, it was a trailer agents. The applicant come in, at that, originally we were going to have a larger building expansion, a couple of phase building expansions, the, the existing, uh, concrete pad and, uh, the fuel tank is going to be removed as part of that, uh, it's going to be called the build, uh, trailer sales, the end service, the trailers. There was also expansion, uh, proposed air down expansion associated with this, and this one, so, so that's, uh, so. Jay stated basically how the site was, pretty much under construction, if you will. The, uh, utilities are all, they've been realigned as, as, as requested, uh, the storm being substantial, uh, except for the vegetation, grass and tree, soil built there, been installed. Uh, pavement has all been going down, uh, in accordance with, uh, the approved plan, uh, and Cobble Hill basically was, uh, up and up, that the, uh, were no longer just interested in the property, and I don't know the specifics of it, but, uh, anyway, they were no longer in terms of, uh, I think, uh, the applicant has worked out with, uh, Herc Mental, whose company, uh, in Scarborough on Gibson Road as we speak now, uh, in terms of relocating to this facility, allow them, if you look to, uh, take that existing building to upgrade it, uh, to, uh, to have some additional space with their current location. Part of that was, uh, actually installing a fence around the perimeter of the site, uh, which is shown, uh, within this location here, uh, with the fences, if we will, certainly provide the, uh, knock boxes to our fire department association, and then, two of the main aspects associated with this, uh, was a fuel item, who I don't think contain a four thousand gallons, these are five hundred gallons of, of gasoline, uh, slowly be utilized, but, uh, I, the applicant obviously, uh, for their, uh, rentals, uh, basically what they knew is, you know, you have, uh, aerials and small vacos, not that particular, they were that though, uh, and obviously the, the service inside of what they need to associate with that equipment, uh, doing a few of it, and then take it off site and bring it to the customer, who uses it for a day or week, a month, whatever they need, and then go get it back up and bring it back to the site, through the general maintenance association with it again, uh, and, uh, install it on site. It is all impervious, uh, but obviously, once we started talking about this area here in terms of the fuel, interior fuel, uh, that's a lot, a lot of questions from staff, and specifically in terms of about the, uh, the, uh, action standard.
The aquifer, uh, protection overlays.
Generally, down in itself, it's basically a concrete pad, uh, there's ballers all around the thing, uh, it's, uh, above ground storage tanks, uh, they're double wall, uh, they do have overfill alarms, uh, interstitial, uh, uh, alarms in, in terms of, within the spaces between the two walls. Uh, again, the only ones that'll actually utilize that are our employees, that it's, that's the only ones that'd actually be allowed to it. Uh, we have reviewed, uh, again, identified and tried to work with, uh, with Herc in terms of providing some additional information and be, uh, relative to the active protection zone. Uh, a question was regarding the DEP in terms of wellhead protection. I don't know if, I know specifically what that is, and I know I don't, but I do know that they do have a permit from the DEP and associated with the tanks, uh, that they have here, um, undercover for the tank farm. Again, they, they'd be happy to, uh, to discuss that if, if that's comfortable. Uh, they hadn't proposed that, it wasn't at their existing site, obviously, but if the intent is to get some type of cover over the tank, uh, the, the fuel tank pad, uh, they'd certainly be willing to, uh, to entertain that and install something with that. A hundred to ten percent of the maximum storage volume. Again, I, I asked her if she could confirm that for me because I don't know, because it's a, it's a double tank system with the interstitial, uh, alarms associated with that, uh, which is a little bit different than the actual, you know, uh, secondary containment associated with a hundred and ten percent. So I apologize, I don't have any answer for that. I'm hopeful that, uh, if the board, I mean, obviously this is all state of the art, they all have all of, again, all of their, uh, state permitting and federal permits associated with it. Uh, they certainly will be working with, uh, the fire department in terms of the NFPA codes and all those other types of things. Uh, I think the other one that was here was, uh, E1E, which is, uh, that everything would be corrosion resistant and everything, again, is, is state of the art and corrosion resistant, and certainly, uh, certainly provide an answer for that. Uh, in terms of disturbance and phasing, I mean, basically, uh, everything, the site work is pretty well done. Uh, as Jay stated, uh, we did have originally, uh, both of the dumpsters back in this location, which is just basically separated, because we do have a fence now that kind of separates this use from that, um, so that, you know, just a separation of the dumpster associated with that.
Uh, there is one proposed light pole that would be fixed on the, uh, the island itself, uh, and that will be, you know, it's a ten foot pole, and, uh, certainly will be full cutoff, and I'll certainly get something from staff on that. Uh, any signage would be, uh, building mounted, um, the area disturbance, again, I'll be happy to put it, but it's pretty much all done, it's completed, uh, in the phasing plan really at this point in time is, you know, phase one is pretty much, uh, we're trying to get it complete, and phase two will just basically consist of that small building addition which had been, uh, uh, previously approved. So, uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, I, I know it's, it's probably, I wish I had some additional information in terms of the, uh, uh, you know, the actual tanks, be able to provide you some specific information regarding that. Um, I, I did the best I could based upon, uh, my limited knowledge, uh, certainly, like I said, uh, these tanks are not my strong suit, um, but like I say, they have got all their permits, local, uh, state permits, uh, they're certainly willing to come in and, and make sure associated with the code enforcement officer and, and the planner and the fire department that, uh, uh, everything is up to code and has association with that. And I would, uh, ask if possible, that if we could get some type of conditional approval, allowing us to work through staff, uh, with those items would be most appreciative. Uh, with that, I'd conclude my presentation. Again, be happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With the record, we have the opportunity for a public comment, but I'm not seeing the interest, but we just turn to the board. I will say, and maybe we can pass down, that we do have a draft motion that's prepared, conditional, for conditional approval. Um, we'll see how board discussion goes and whether folks are comfortable with considering that, given some of the, the new pieces of housekeeping and additional information that, that may be needed, but I figured we'd put that in front of everyone now, just so you can reference that as you.
And, and just for the board's edification, I understand that they're on Gibson Road, and I think these folks were the opinion cheese, and they're just going to move from Gibson Road down here, but obviously the difference is, you know, they're in the aquifer protection here where they weren't on Gibson Road. So, uh.
Right.
I think that was just something that caught them a little bit by surprise associated with that, but they did go immediately with that to the DEP, like I said, and, you know, Rachel, that they were all set from a permit standpoint associated with the state regulations in terms of being, uh, within that area.
Okay.
General, Robin, I had to say, you probably know more about this than I.
Do you have anything?
Uh, this is one of those items where I sit here and say, if the staff is happy, then I am happy, so I encourage you to work very closely with staff and their, their needs.
I appreciate that. Again, we do, and again, I do feel bad, uh, like I said, the, uh, the environmental manager for Herc, uh, had every intention to be here with me this evening, and, uh, again, the holiday week, and something just came up and, uh, she couldn't make it, but she did say she'd be back Friday, uh, into the office at least, and would provide a lot of additional information, or additional information for me that certainly I'll get to staff, and certainly we'll get to staff, whatever they need to get a, a comfort level associated with, uh, meeting the, uh, the actual regulations.
All right. Roger?
Um, I, I would tend to agree with Nick, and just looking at the conditions on the, um, draft motion, I think we're basically leaving it up to our staff.
I think you'll see that, generally speaking, the conditions mirror the, some, a lot of the staff comments, so.
The only observation I would make is, um, it looks like they have actually some of their equipment, you know, their rental equipment on the site already. Do you know that?
No, I can't answer that. I know they, they were certainly working on the building last I was there, and I think they actually, I think they had the ballers last I saw, that they were so, you know, they were getting prepared for it.
I almost thought they might be actually working there, I mean, operating right there.
No, I don't think they're actually operating out of the site at this point. If they are, I, I, I'm not familiar with that, but no, I, I, I believe they're still working out of the Gibson Road site.
Okay. I'm all set.
Rick?
Uh, I just have a, a question, real quick one. On the map, you have a gravel, you know, you have pavement, and then you have a gravel area. What's the gravel area for? Am I not, or am I not reading that right? See, right, fair, what's that?
I apologize, that's, that was existing gravel area.
It's pavement, though?
Yes, I believe that's.
Okay. I was wondering why it had a big gravel.
Yes. I think it was, it was existing gravel area before we started doing anything.
All right.
Before they started doing anything.
Uh, other than that, I'd say exactly what Mr. McGee said, and, um, as long as Angela's happy.
And Jay?
Thank you.
Rachel?
Yeah, I'm a little conflicted because I, I didn't see the original plan. Uh, I wasn't on the board, so I've been trying to figure out the difference between the original one and, and this one, and I think I'm, I think I'm there.
I, I probably should have brought the original, to be honest with you.
Yeah, that's, I, all right, I, I think I have it, but I am kind of concerned about the length of the list of the conditions that are put on there, um, some of which, some of these conditions, uh, depending on, on how they're, they're clarified, might make a difference in, in whether we wanted more material, more work done or not. Uh, so, uh, at, at this point, I, I'm not ready to vote on the draft motion. Um, and if it were to come to a vote, I would be likely at this point to vote no. I, I would like to see more of this completed.
Okay. Robin?
I'd like to commend staff for picking up on the fact that this is on an, in an aquifer protection overlay. This is very important, and this is why I also agree with Ms. Hendrickson that, um, I would, I would, I am not inclined to support a, a motion either, um, largely because we can't confirm, not only because we can't confirm the hundred and ten percent secondary containment, but, um, I don't know if you folks have looked through the S P C C plan that was here? And, um, an S P C C plan is supposed to be, uh, renewed by a professional engineer every five years and should also have annual updates, and if it's, you know, you just, you know, a thousand gallons here or there, but if you turn to page two dash one, we're talking about an aggregate amount of about six thousand gallons of, of virgin petroleum. Um, so I am not inclined either to, so if their permits are anything like the S P C C plan, I need more information, and am not inclined to support a, a draft motion conditional at this point or otherwise.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, this is one of those, one of those tricky cases where, you know, you, the, the number and, and nature of the conditions starts to push the envelope somewhat, and I, I think, um, you know, Jay and staff are generally always careful to say when, you know, when we, we do have draft motions with conditions that, um, that's not intended to signal that, you know, that that's the expectation, that, that's the direction the board will necessarily go. And I appreciate that staff, um, was, was prepared to, um, or is prepared to, um, follow through on, on these conditions. Um, I think the fact that we don't have the, um, additional applicants representative here to speak in a little more detail to some of these environmental items, to me, kind of, is what puts it over the top. Um, I don't know that we would necessarily get there if that were the case, given some of the outstanding technical information, but I think that, given that we're, you know, we're, we didn't have the opportunity to hear from that person and ask that person questions, um, and I commend Mr. Frank for doing his, his, uh, his best. My personal, uh, preference here would be to let this, uh, let this mature a little bit more and, and see if we can get some additional information, and hopefully, the next time around, it's, if, you know, technically it's an item, it's something that, that we can consider, um, you know, in an efficient way and, and have all, or at least most of the loose ends tied up. So, um, I guess to recap, I'm not prepared to put a motion forward. Um, if someone else wanted to do that, that would be their prerogative, uh, but that, uh, as a member with one vote, that's, uh, that's my, where I am right now. Based on what I know as a layperson about where this all stands, given that this was a site that was previously approved by this board, we're only talking about a couple of differences. You know, it's, shouldn't be a huge lift, but we do, you know, we have the fuel tank, the, you know, Fuel Island is a significant change in aquifer overlay, so, um, I'd feel more comfortable just, uh, letting this go another round, so, that's where I am.
Could I have a quick question, Jay? Are you meeting in three weeks again?
Yep. We have one more meeting.
December 11th.
And again, I appreciate your time, folks, I really do. I mean, obviously, you know, as always, you know, as you're trying to move someone from point A to point B, uh, you say they're right up the street on Gibson Road, they're moving down, and, you know, everyone's thinking, Jesus, you know, big deal, this should be pretty straightforward, we already have a site plan approval. Um, but let me see what I can do in terms of, you know, getting you some additional information regarding the fuel and, uh, get back in on the 11th. Again, obviously, our issue is just that, you know, uh, these folks thought they'd be moving in sooner rather than, uh, than later, so, uh, but, you know, uh, we'll do a turnaround and we'll get it back to you.
All right.
Can I just add that we may want to have, make sure that we have an active S P C C plan?
Yeah, and again, I appreciate, understand what I, they basically gave me the one, it sounds like it was an older one, unfortunately, from the one that they had on Gibson Road.
Seventeen years.
Seventeen years. And again, there may have been some appendices with that that I might not have included, uh, because it was probably just a very long document, and, yeah, that might have been me. I might have just stopped talking at a certain point and said, here you go.
For the board, for the board. For the board's, just sort of point of reference, and, you know, Sean Frank, I think, came into the project a bit later, but staff has been obviously out on the site, construction has been going on, so we've sort of had a third-party inspector through that process, going under the, we did a pre-construction meeting, talking about the, are we building what was originally approved? Yes, and so that's how this whole project started, and it was at some point this summer that our commercial code inspector was doing some final details, I think it was Mr. Butler, maybe it was you, Angela, was having the conversation. Either way, someone from staff was having conversation, and, you know, it sort of just came up in general conversation, oh, Herc is moving there, bring their fuel containment tanks, well, and so that, that's when we sort of said, okay, time to, time to have a whole nother discussion, because if you're changing one tenant, you know, if it was going to be Cobble Hill Trailers, and now it becomes, you know, Corey Fellow's Trailers, well, that's, you know, that's not a big deal, but, you know, it was when, it was when it was noticed that there was this whole other activity that these conversations began.
Well done.
Okay.
I think I'll come back and see you in a few weeks.
All right, thank you. Again, item number eight was tabled. Item number nine, staff report, Jay.
Yep, so our next meeting, it was just referenced, is December 11th. We are not going to be meeting in this room, at this point, we're scheduled to meet over at the high school cafeteria. This room is going to have its audiovisual systems completely redone, it'll be shut down for two weeks in December, so we will be over at the high school cafeteria. If we, if that changes, we'll certainly let people know that, but that's the expectation for the next meetings, we'll be over there. And then in terms of the next meeting, did have a conversation with the, with the chair, and sort of threw out the idea of, as we like to try to do at the end of the year, get together for a little planning board workshop slash end-of-year social gathering, if you will, maybe before the next meeting, we'll do a light workshop, really, you know, thinking, as, I think one of the things I was thinking about, Corey, you just sort of referenced, is, you know, how you're getting your staff packets, is, you know, is that working for you? Really get back to Dropbox and talk about the electronic files, and sort of some of those details, because we've been sort of, we've initiated, and we've let it float for a few years, so probably a good time to figure out what's working for you, what do you need in your hands to make the, to make the decisions? So I think that would be, do that, and have a little supper before our meeting, so hopefully folks can put that on their calendar, and email will follow as a reminder of that, so. That is what I have at this point.
Can I add? I just wanted to let everybody know that we're having a public meeting for the Gorham Road Improvement Project, and we're looking, focusing on finalizing phase one of that, which basically goes from the school campus, Wentworth Drive, down to Maple Avenue, and that is on December 13th at 6:30, and we're holding it at the Scarborough Library, because again, this is not available, but hoping to finalize those plans for construction for next year, construction season.
Thank you. Administrative amendment report.
Nothing to report this meeting.
Any planning board correspondence? No? Planning board comments? I will just briefly note that, as some expected, there have been some parking challenges at Nessus River Brewery, they've been very successful, which is great, and I've been there one or two times. Maybe, Jay, could you brief us just quickly on sort of the council's recent action, and some of you may be aware of it.
Sure.
Because there was some on-street parking that was happening, speaking of Gorham Road.
Yep, absolutely, be happy to bring you up to speed. So let's see, the ordinance committee, that sort of, actually, it was brought to the ordinance committee from our police department, that there were some concerns about safety, about on-street parking, particularly in light of some concerns we received from a Butters and residents who had driven by, and so, looking at that issue, it was brought to the ordinance committee, who ultimately brought it forward to town council. What did they bring forward, I should probably reference, is typically in town, on-street parking is allowed, but for where our ordinance says it's not allowed, and so over the years, as you can imagine, the list is kind of long and, and, well, leave it at that. And so what the council at this point passed at first reading is to eliminate parking on the, actually, on the restaurant side of Gorham Road, and the principal concern there was around site distances coming out of the driveway. Other concerns have been around sort of people crossing the street, and sort of the nature of, excuse me, particularly this time of year, it's pretty dark out there, but at this point, council sort of found that parking on the other side of the road, there was more opportunity, it didn't conflict with folks' driveways who live next to the restaurant, which is one of the concerns they've heard, and it didn't conflict with site distances. And so that was passed at first reading, and actually, this is an issue that staff is going to be bringing to our transportation committee on November 28th, so what's that, next Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, to sort of talk about some more of those details, and try to make some, help the council make some recommendations, if they, if they so desire. So that's where that stands right now. So that, what's, and then sort of just to close the loop, what council has standing before them is it would limit parking to the, let's call it the south side of Gorham Road only, or, let me put it this way, it would, it would call for no parking, basically, from about the pump station, more or less, up to eight corners on the north side of the street, or on the restaurant side of the street, and park, on-street parking would be allowed, as it always has been elsewhere.
Yeah, and just to reiterate, as most of you'll recall, the applicant in that case did not get any special relief in terms of parking, they met the parking requirements. I know that I'm generally not one to want to require extra parking, an extra impervious surface, you know, sometimes it's just tough to gauge how things are going to play out, and whether it's something that's kind of an initial blitz, because the business just opened, we've definitely seen that happen in other cases, and then it sort of calms down, based on everything I'm aware of, the owner's been, you know, operating in good faith and cooperative, and so we'll just have to see how it all unfolds, and certainly want them to be successful, but appreciate that update.
Quickly add to that, if we're talking to the ordinance, or whispering into their ears, the ordinance committee, it is a good time to review the number of spaces we require for a restaurant hub type of facility, just because, I think we're seeing it most everywhere, I mean, the wireless cures pact, the Mexican place would hear about it.
El Reyo.
El Reyo, they're probably locked jammed a lot of the time. I have no doubts that the one that's going to be going in off of Route 1, Gateway Commons.
Gateway Commons, that's the residential-
Table and tap.
Yeah, the table and tap, they're going to have an issue with it, and whether it's just moving it up by a half a spot, and, you know, a point five or something, just to give us a little breathing room, on top of the parking being tight there, where are they going to put snow? This is, that's when the real funds are going to start down there, just so you know. You know, having an extra half a spot for that type of facility here in Scarborough isn't going to hurt us, it's just another spot of snow, if we're whispering into people's ears.
Thanks. Anything else?
Can I just quick, I think that lighting's very important, too, and we always talk about that, but I don't, I drive that road very often, a couple times a day, and that gets dark at four or five o'clock now, and that's a very dark corner. You know, you get someone coming out of a black truck, stepping out into the road, it's hard to see them, so, just, I know they're looking at all that, but it'd be nice, whenever we do an establishment like that, if we can anticipate, I know they're changing, might be changing the parking rules a little bit, but if we can anticipate that overflow and make sure it's at least well-lit, so you can-
I think these are all, all things that fall within making sure that things really work when we have this, especially this sort of TBC type approach, where we're trying to encourage somewhat denser development and more activity in certain areas, sometimes adjacent to some residential areas, so I think it's good that we're, everyone's kind of tracking it, and really refining things going forward, so.
All right, Corey. Just to Jay, do you recall, when they, on their parking there, did they have the standard width parking spaces, or were they narrow?
No, they were the standard nine-by-18 spaces.
Any other planning board comments? I'll move to adjourn. All favor. Thank you.
There's two planned tubes-